Yeah.
It could be. I don't know. Yeah. I just want to do a little. No. Yes. I don't know. I don't see if I should have. So. Yeah. You're listening. You're very interested in me because, uh. Oh, my gosh. Recording. Yeah. This is true. I'm sure. I'm sure. You like to check out this press. She must love it. Who's the good person? How much was it? I was still going to. I'm sorry. Here's another one. I would. Click on. The other website. And we were sad. They're on the floor. It's just for you all. Okay. Yeah. It's okay. We need to be. We're important. We're here. What if we're trying to be? Or what if you know? Oh, you don't get. No, we don't put you there. It's a word. It's a. I'm gonna use that. The great job for the. He said, yeah. We should. People. From people. Like I've tried. Yes. We should probably use that now. It's very much why. That's. But. She's. You can't like change. Yeah. They're tired. I'm. I didn't try. I'm. No, no. Don't buy these. I was. They don't know. We'll get the. You will never. No. Everyone's got this. I have a lot of. I think you heard. Why do you? You're not showing yourself. Sun comes to the net. God doesn't get. Everybody doing. Everybody doing better. Thank you all. So. I got. I was. Wait. Wait. Yes. Thank you. Thank you. I need a signature. For what? It's really tough. I was trying to find it. You're what? My battery? Oh. I know. No, it's only been getting newer. Okay. And you get. Yeah. Okay. Just. Why? Oh. Um. So. Here's our. Again. We want to. To. Uh. Twenty four. We have. Two. For. Oh. Yes. It's. So. All right. And. It's. Yeah. And. We think. On the last. Those. And. She. Also. This is. So. That is a little. Looking for. Last. Having. And. Or less. And. So. It's. Well. So. Do you guys understand? So. And so. We're. Scouting. Down. So. I'm. Yeah. I just. Can make. Cause I. I'm. Just. Thank. You. Um. She work. Hasn't. No. She was. I just found the. The. That's. I want. I feel. Good. Johnson. So. I. Is that. Sure. You really don't. Even though there's. Even though. There's. Some. Something. That. I'm. Just. I don't. Have. The. Have. I'm. Not. Like. For this. One. Day. Wasn't. How. Did. We. So. All. The. Sisters. Okay. Yes. I did. I didn't. Know. So. Where. I don't. Really. Do. Do. Proper. Yeah. Okay. Um. And. So. Yes. Yeah. Oh. Definitely. You're. Different. On. Yes. Oh. I've never been. That. So. I'm. Look. On. I was. Because then. I'll. I. Yeah. This time. I. I haven't. About. That's not a bad thing. You say that. I could. Sorry. I could hear better. If we did use these things, but I have. I'm prepared. He did. I. Would say. Yes. Well, I'm. I'm only. On. Part. Of. That. But. I have. A. Thing. To. Do. Only. But. I. I love. Little. Awards. Very. Right. And. They. Do. And. They. Came. On. How. Um. Well. I. Should. Be. My. Nation. And. We. Should. Have. And. I wish. I. I. For. Myself. I see. I. I. Can't. See. You. So. But. It's. Like. We. Are. The. I still. You. Much. Time. Coming. Now. And. You. Know. That. It's. Right. Me. And. You. Um. Still. That. Do I have time to bring. This. More. Call. My. Mom. I. You. Got. It. Works. Yeah. What I don't. Like. That. On. The dog. And. Probably. Always. To. Um. And. I'm. Thinking. So. My. My. And. I'm. Trying. To. Be. Um. And. We. Remember. One. Please. Very. But. It's. There. It's. Yes. I know. I'm. So. I know. It's. Yeah. I. We. Got. It's. Going. There. So. 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 Well. That's funny. Um. I seen. You. You. Want to make that. So. That. It. Has. Oh. No. I could. You. Made. It. That. I. Just. Got. To. See. Anything. Yes. Yeah. He knew that. Yeah. I went. They said. That. He. Was. That. Was. A. Little. Better. Yeah. Who knew? I want. To. Get. One. Yeah. I. See. That. It's. Um. What? It's. Respect. It's. Or. You. Okay. It's. It's. A. Charlotte. Around. Here. Looking. For. Us. Very. Old. And. Well. And. Then. You're. Very. Very. Pardon. You. For. Saying. So. I. Know. Our. Own. And. Every. Okay. So. We. Have. Boss. Very. Fine. Thank. You. Look. You. But. It's. Something. A. Horse. For. Your. Path. I was listening to Ron. Story. That. Was. Here. Sorry. I. Don't. Go.
Well. I'm. Being. Told. Our. Six. Oh. One. PM. Will you please rise and join me for the. Quotations. The. Quotations. To. The. Father. Of. The. United. States. Of. America. And. To. The. Republic. For. Which. Stands. One. Nation. Under. God. Indivisible. With. Liberty. And. Justice. For. All. All. Approval. Treasurers. Warrants. Uh. Payroll. Warrants. For. February. Twenty. Fourth. And. March. Third. Twenty. Twenty. Three. Open. For. Motion.
I move to. Agree. The. Payroll. Warrant. Of. February. Twenty. Four. March. Three. Twenty. Four.
Second.
It's. Been moved. And. Seconded. Any. Questions? Or? Discussion? Seeing none. All. Those. In. Favor. Motion. Passes. Five. Zero. Councillor. Payable. Warrants. For. February. Twenty. Eighth. And. March. Seventh. Twenty. Twenty. Three. Open. For. Motion.
I move to. Agree. The. Councillor. Payable. Warrants. Of. February. Twenty. Eight. And. March. Seven. Twenty. Twenty. Three.
Well. Second.
Been moved. And. Seconded. Any. Questions? Or? Discussion? Seeing none. All. Those. In. Favor. Motion. Passes. Five. Zero. Uh. Approval. The. Minutes. For. February. Twenty. First. Twenty. Twenty. Three. Open. For. Motion.
I move to. Agree. The. Minutes. Of. February. Twenty. One. Twenty. Twenty. Three.
We have. Looked. Shouldn't. Yeah. Oh. We must. Do. Paper. Oh.
Been moved.
Second.
Okay. Been moved. And. Seconded. Any. Questions? Or? Discussion? Edits? Seeing none. All. Those. In. Favor. Motion. Passes. Five. Zero. Uh. We do not have any special presentations or awards. Uh. Committee. Appointments. Uh. We do need to do these separately, I believe. Or at least two of them, because they're different committees. Uh. Wisconsin Cemetery Committee. Steve. Christiansen. Open. For. Motion.
I move to. Agree. The. Appointment. Steve. Christiansen. To. Wisconsin Cemetery Committee.
One. Second.
Been moved. And. Seconded. Any. Questions? Or? Discussion? Seeing none. All. Those. In. Favor. Motion. Passes. Five. Zero. Uh. Appearance. Uh. The. Town. Committee. Cecilia. Ludwig. And. Stephen. Ludwig. Open. For. Motion.
I move to. Agree. The. Appointment. Of. Cecilia. Ludwig. And. Stephen. Ludwig. To. The. Affairs. Of. The. Committee.
Second.
Been moved. And. Seconded. Any. Questions? Or? Discussion? Seeing none. All. Those. In. Favor. Motion. Passes. Five. Zero. Public hearings. We have. And. This is a renewal, not a new liquor license for Main Tasting Center. At five oh six. Old Bath Road. Open. For. Motion.[679.77] open for motion to open the public hearing.
And make a motion to approve, to go into executive into public hearing.
Second.
Removed and seconded, all those in favor. Or until the hearing as a six oh five P M, is there anyone who would like to speak to the main tasting center, request for renewal liquor license? Anyone online? Going once. Going twice. Okay, open for motion to close the hearing.
I made a motion to close the public hearing on the liquor license.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor. Hearing is closed at six oh five P M, open for motion on the liquor license.
Motion approved the liquor license for main tasting center five oh six Bath Road.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion passes five zero. We're not in a public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? If so, we ask that come and you're gonna be speaking into the owl, that's what this little speaker is. Please state your name for the record and do speak up so that those online and in the room can hear you. You are limited to five minutes, at least for the first pass, so if there's anyone who would like to speak, please step forward and state your name. What would you like to say? Anyone online? Okay, going once. Going twice. Okay. Moving on. Down to department or committee chair, broadband committee update, Carla. And sitting, you're welcome to sit if you'd like.
Thank you. We wanted to update you since we haven't met for a while. We do have a date for the next round, grant round from the main connectivity authority, which is, they said likely August to submit, and the application will be out, I believe it was June that they said. This is subject to possible changes, but that's what we're going with right now. Now, to be ready for that, the board, as I understand, I remember did not take an official vote on which way we're going for broadband, but from everything I could tell from the discussion, it looked like it was Fidium. And so, what I, what we want to do tonight is prepare everybody for the financial commitment that would be needed. Should we go with Fidium in an application, Fidium being part of Consolidated, for an application for that, prepare for that for this coming August. And so that's the major issue for tonight. And I think I'll let Evan talk about the, the magic, the magic number from this asset is a hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred, which would put us in a competitive position, or as competitive as we can be for a grant where we would also leverage that with another hundred thousand from the county, which is available. They will make up to a hundred thousand dollar commitment. But, you know, Evan can go through the process, some ideas we have to reduce that total amount that would go on to any warrant that would hopefully make it more palatable for voters. So do you want to go through the numbers on this?
Sure. So Carla did a pretty good job summarizing it, but in total, we're trying to get to two hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred dollars, which is based on a hundred fifty dollars per premise. Main connectivity authority says that we have one thousand eight hundred eighty premises. That multiplication comes up to two eighty-three, two hundred, I added three hundred for contingency, just because there's gonna be new maps updated in June, so there could be a couple more houses built by then, we'll see. So with the Lincoln County grant, they'll match dollar for dollar up to one hundred thousand, which leaves the town looking to raise one hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred. As it stands right now, the town allocated seventy-five hundred dollars from the ARPA funds for the committee to work with for a budget. We received a seventy-five hundred dollar grant from the Allen Institute, and we recommended contracting Axiom to produce the feasibility study for seven thousand, and that grant can go toward paying for that seven thousand, which leaves the original seventy-five hundred dollars that was allocated by the board untouched. So what we are suggesting, and we'd like to take the temperature up of the board, is taking that seventy-five hundred dollars, seventy-five hundred that was originally allocated, combining it with the remaining ARPA funds that are in excess of forty-seven thousand five hundred, so which would leave with just over a total of fifty-five thousand, and allocate that toward the goal of one hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred from the town, so more an article that gets lower to one twenty-eight five. So that's one thing that we'd like to take your temperature on and see what the board thinks about that.
Am I correct that Consolidated is the one who's going to be actually putting forth the grant?
Correct.
Okay, and has, have they confirmed that this is the number they want to be able to say?
They've said anywhere from fifteen dollars per premise up to a hundred fifty dollars, or correct, a hundred fifty dollars per premise. So that's what we're shooting toward. They haven't asked anybody for more than that. And approving that ultimately is up to the board's discretion when they go in, should a grant application finally happen, the town doesn't have to obviously spend all that, you can approve whatever going into that application.
The issue is to be competitive, and it's very competitive, and there's not enough money out there. We really personally think that we need to be at the top of that at a hundred fifty, which is what Consolidated suggested. And they put in the bulk of the rest of the subsidy that they don't get from the state.
And so the grant would be due sometime in August, we think.
I think that the, the application might open then, I'm not sure.
Oh, I thought it was opening in June, but yeah, somewhere over June.
Might open in August.
Yeah.
And they would want a vote from the town before the application was, okay. So if the application opens in August, what's a rough guess of when it's due?
Probably six, eight weeks.
Yeah, I, I heard it differently. I heard, I heard them say, we can clarify that, but I.
They haven't released, yeah, they haven't released it officially yet, just like.
Questions?
So we're looking for a hearing?
No.
A town hearing on any more of this?
If we decided to put it on the warrant for June, it would be part of the town meeting hearing that would have all the other warrant articles.
Right.
If we did not put it on, it would be its own thing, potentially at a special town meeting.
But we, we'd want to put it on for the June warrant to be a here with artist date, is that correct? No, no.
I'm, I'm a little torn on that, I think. Well, at least at the moment, because the budget, we've not gone through the budget entirely. Like I would not, personally not want to say tonight whether we put this on the warrant.
Right, I'm talking out loud.
Yeah.
Because we're in the budget process.
Yeah.
This is maybe something we don't have to consider at this point, but I can feel the urgency over here. There's your pet day.
Well, Fidium will want to know whether we're in or out, you know, with.
I mean, we did vote on, did you vote, the letter of support, what did we call it?
Support letter.
Letter of support, yes. So I mean, hopefully there were.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good start, but then the decision is yes, it's Fidium. Or that you're going.
Or if not, still, if it was any other company, there still needs to be some kind of financial commitment from the town.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we've pretty much decided going consolidated route, right?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, I was wanting to let the town vote on that sort of style, sort of, I, I think it might even be worthwhile to, to have a special town meeting on it, just, but also to roll it into the budget process makes sense.
Budget process now, so I, I think that's the.
We'd have to roll pretty fast.
Yeah, we'd like to go tomorrow, tomorrow night, maybe. Talking about all of it.
Probably next meeting when we get into capital, we can, we can.
I, I think we need to talk about it in the budget process.
Let's do that.
Which has to be completed by the end of the month anyway, so.
Let's do that.
Does that work for votes included in the capital discussions?
You know, and if you wanted to have a public hearing on this, certainly could do that, and, you know, invite people to come in and, and have, offer their comments. But not, that, that wouldn't be all that difficult together.
We, we do have.
We could do it in a regular slide work.
We did get another grant for ten thousand from the connectivity authority to help educate what's going on in the town for broadband and would help, we could even use some of that money for a facilitator if you wanted to do that.
Cool.
That's available.
See, I really thought that we were going to talk a little bit more about it with the town, just so that they would know.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't get the grant, it's not even happening anyway.
Right.
I just mean, we all agree in terms of the next step to move in that direction, so.
So specifically, we want to know about the ARPA funds, because whether or not we're gonna advocate for a hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred, or one twenty-eight thousand five hundred, or some other number.
Well, I always like to keep the ARPA funds out of this, because I've got plenty of other things I like to do.
I, I've noticed that. I've, you know, I've seen, I've seen eighteen months pass by, and this is right on page one, I'll say it again, it's one of the first four things, so you don't have to go searching very far.
Yeah, I heard.
But I mean, if the town is gonna put in a commitment, the town's gonna put in a commitment, the money's coming from somewhere either way, so. You know, I would advocate that if we're gonna do the whole hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred, and again, this is part of the project discussion, but we just go for that amount out of the, you know, the capital reserves, and we leave maybe ARPA funds to do out some of the other things, so.
They got a deadline on them, you know.
What, ARPA funds?
Right.
Yeah, twenty twenty-six.
Right, twenty twenty-four, you gotta have them figured out.
Oh, I gotta figure it out, trust me.
Well, right here, sixty minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, perfect commit, or ARPA funds tonight.
Sure, we talked, we talked about in the budget, so we're looking at the whole pie, and we're looking at all the other slices.
Well, I'm looking forward to that discussion.
So we have another budget meeting tomorrow, I don't know if we'll get into capital or not, because we've got the biggest.
I'm not planning on it, so I.
Okay, so then it would likely be the next one.
We just don't want to miss, miss any cuts.
The next one would be March.
No, the next week. The fourteenth, I would guess is when we'll start.
Fifteen.
Get into capital.
Fourteen to fifteen.
Fifteen. They're scheduled for Wednesdays. Eight, fifteen, twenty-seven.
I knew it was a five, I just.
All right, fifteen, for the capital. Yeah.
What time, six?
Yeah. So you wouldn't mind letting me be here for that?
Can do, and I think Simon Thor from Consolidated had some figures for specs, instructions, so we want to set up something with him for next select board meeting, or for that budget meeting, we could do that, whichever.
Yeah, I'm gonna go in all in.
All right.
So I fifteen, I do stand here a little confused though, because even if the board agrees to put this on warrant, doesn't mean that it's gonna pass.
Right, that's why I wanted fifty-five thousand dollars. Because we can still make that a hundred and ten instead of zero.
Okay.
So, I like parachutes.
All right. Okay.
We're looking at on the fifteenth.
Thank you. No, it's only here as a fifth, I just had it down. All right. Um, don't have any other unfinished business, new business, Red Brew FY twenty-one audits.
So boards don't really want to go through the full audit, so if you want to, I will. But there are one or two things that are kind of important, and that's the auditor's report. So that's pages three, four, and five of the audit. So it expresses an unqualified opinion, so we didn't find anything going on in the town that gave us any indication of there was any fraud, or any intentional misstatements within the financial statements. So I will stop with the financial statements there, and I'll go through this little handout that I did, because this is usually what most boards are concerned about. And it kind of gives you a picture of how the last six years have been. So in most towns, cash is king, so if you guys look, you had about one point seven million in cash. It dropped down to one point two in two thousand eighteen, it's a one point four, and now it's just shy of five million. One thing to keep in mind, and there were some transfers that were made for capital items that didn't get spent before the end of the year, so that's why the cash is a little bit higher. If you look at your accounts receivable, it goes from about six hundred thousand up to one point three, but it's down right around six hundred this year. Your taxes that are due, between sixteen and twenty twenty-one, it went down about four hundred thousand dollars. And that's typical with most of the towns, what we saw was going through COVID, a lot of people were making sure that they prioritize paying the taxes. You still have quite a bit of tax-acquired property that's sitting in there, so that kind of skews it a little bit. That takes about another five hundred thousand dollars off of it. So you real outstanding taxes are like around five hundred thousand, which is pretty good. So if you look at your accounts payable, one thing I want to point out is if you look at what your cash was in twenty sixteen, which is about one point seven million, you had bills that were sitting there for about a million. So the reality was, you didn't have as much undesigned funds as, as you thought you would have had if you compared your cash, get your accrued payroll, deferred revenue. But the big thing that everybody looks at is fund balance. So you've got restricted, assigned and unassigned. The unassigned is what most people are concerned about, so in twenty sixteen, you were at about thirty-seven thousand. It covered around two to three hundred thousand, seven forty-seven in twenty twenty, and one point seven in twenty twenty-one. So made some pretty good strides with getting back to where you were able to pay your bills and not be concerned about cash flow as much. So if you look at your annual cash expenses, so you're almost fifteen million in twenty sixteen, and now you're down at twelve point eight. So if you look at the number of months, the cash that you have on hand, it's about four and a half at the end of twenty-one. We have been running right around one point three four months, which my general rule of thumb is when you see your taxes, you guys, it's, you know, August, September, or somewhere in that range. So you need to get through to when you commit your taxes. So that's what your undesigned funds is used for, is to get through those tighter times when you don't have the tax collections coming in. The other thing that I thought was pretty interesting is if you look at your months of cash and your undesigned fund balance, you went from point oh three to now you're about a month and a half. So you're doing pretty good, you're almost to that two-month mark, which is what everybody kind of uses as a general rule of thumb. And then you can see below that is the reserve, so I put the four biggest, and then I consolidated the rest of them, so you're about ten million in two thousand sixteen, and you shot fifteen million in the other twenty one. You can see how everything kind of has moved over the past few years. Anybody have any questions?
So would you give us five stars?
You guys have made a lot of headway getting to where you're at now. It, it's hard, because you're trying to balance, you don't want to overtax the taxpayer, but at the same time, you're gonna be able to pay bills.
And that's why I harp on that fund balance all the time.
It's, it's striking a balance, and you needed to build up your fund balance, and a lot of the reason why it was up so much was because of your revenues. Your excise tax collections were up, the revenue sharing was up, so a lot of those things contributed to what you have in undesigned fund balance.
And we had a town manager who thought.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Pretty good.
Thank you, Evan.
Send me water district charter change. Send us some information on this today.
I think that the you know, it's in your speech pretty well to this. I was gonna bring this up in my management report, but I'm bringing it up now. We did have a meeting Monday morning with our D E P, USDA, Oliver, and a couple other federal people about what our options are gonna be with the issues that we have after wastewater treatment plant. It does appear, even though we haven't officially been told, does appear that, that they're not willing to support leaving the plant where it currently is. I don't think they can legally tell us that we have to move it, but they don't have to help us fund it. And, you know, we're, we're talking tens of millions of dollars here, and it's something the town is not going to be able to do on its own. And I, I don't want to get people overthinking this, but there are some other options, and one of them is the town can just get out of the wastewater business altogether. Turn this over to the utility district and, and be done with it, and and, and there are pros and costs to that, but I don't want to close the door on any option right now. I think we just need to have that discussion as to whether we should proceed that way or not. And one option is to actually combine wastewater with the water district. They're an established utility, it would be a little easier to do that than to go off on their own and establish it through an act of the legislature. So they're going through a charter change currently now. They're looking at opportunities to expand in other districts, and just, you know, kind of looking towards the future. And one of the things that they can do while they're doing their charter change now is change their charter to allow them to provide wastewater services. And this is something that has to be approved by the legislature, because they were established by that. It obligates the town to nothing. All it does is kind of speed up the process, if in fact we decide that, you know, the town decides that they want to go that route with it, the charter will already be in place to allow them to do it. If we decide and don't want to go that route at all, doesn't matter, it's, it's in their charter, but it's, it's an unused, it will be an unused part of it. But this just, it makes sense to me, because if, if we have this discussion and the town wrote, we decide that's what we want to do, then they have to go through this whole legislative process all over again, which is time-consuming and costly, so I recommend that that you recommend to the water district, they include that language in their, in their charter change as they're doing that now.
Questions?
I think it's on the, I'm making a motion that we ask the water district to include that word change in the new charter.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero.
Did you hear that, Chris?
Yes, I did.
Moving down to Tennessee vacant requests. See the. It's nothing against.
A second.
Been moved and seconded to reject the payment request, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Down to number eleven, assessing business? Yep. How my entries are for.
I guess I kind of said what I have to say already, because I don't wait for a loop, so I'm just trying to get caught with some things, I need to cut off this, so I don't really have a lot for it, other than the fact that I.
Okay.
Doesn't sound like it. Well, we did get stern actually, but that's the score.
Uh, any other, other board business before you go into executive session? And we do anticipate a vote after?
Yes.
Yes, we do anticipate a vote after the executive session. I'll send them, yes, I'll send you. All right, open for motion to enter executive session.
Make a motion to answer into executive session pursuant to one M R S three, uh, four oh five, six.
Moved and seconded, any questions or stuff? Seeing none, all those in favor? Or any executive session, that's six thirty-one, Susan, what's your question?
Okay, it sounded like you do anticipate a vote after, did you say? After this executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, so do I hang on in this room, or what's the game plan?
Um.
Can I just call you afterwards and let you know what happened?
Can you do that this evening?
Yes, I'll, I'll do it as soon as we get done.
That's perfect, thank you, that's great, thank you.
Okay. So I'm just gonna stop this, I, I'm just gonna stop this.